Right now, Ms. Martinez, if you can take us out of the practice session on Zoom, we can start in just a few moments. Thank you.
This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 861-797-84980, and the required password is 455226. Call this meeting to order. Mr. Blaker, roll call.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky. Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Akon.
Here.
Ms. D'Avanaro.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
And Dr. Mort.
Here.
At good notice, the Agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on August 30th, 2023, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Mr. De Silva, would you lead us in the salute, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise, face the pride of our nation, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva. I don't think we have an executive session in the beginning. Okay, we will keep that for the end. All right, so Agenda questions. Please, please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one, and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please state your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. De Silva. All right, we are officially open to the public. Seeing no one come forward, a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Hughes, second by Ms. Akon. All right, Dr. Dittoro, your report this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. We have two presentations. We're going to start with the HIV School Self-Assessment presentation. Ms. Rizzo is going to be providing that presentation.
Hi, good evening. It's our annual reporting of our self-assessment HIV grades, which is mandated by the Department of Education. Significant to the start of this school year was the fact that the Department of Education made some changes to the HIV law, some of which are important to us, others of which don't impact our policy. For districts who allow principals to make a determination before conducting an HIV investigation, there has to be a new process. For our district, we don't allow discretion the minute that someone uses the word harassment, intimidation, or bullying, or describes a circumstance that creates the need for an investigation, we act on it. So the first bullet is not really pertinent to us, but it is crucial to the fact that the Department of Ed made that shift. If an alleged incident of HIV is later found as a verified incident of HIV, then the results of the investigations, which I guess for some districts in the past it wasn't being placed in student records, need to be placed in student records. Again, part of the policy that we had already had in place. This is significant and new to, I would say, every district. If a student is found to have committed three incidents of HIV, then a principal, in consultation with appropriate school staff, shall develop an individual-student intervention plan, which shall be approved by the superintendent of schools or the superintendents designated. And then for that individual, each subsequent act of verified HIV would also require an intervention plan that is approved by the superintendent or their designated. So I think what the DOE is really trying to get at here is that repeated acts of HIV by one individual that are confirmed can't be tolerated by an organization or an institution like a school, and there has to be a plan to remediate and make the behavior stop so that everybody can learn in an appropriate environment. When submitting a written report of HIV, there's a new form that the Department of Ed uses, which is, as the next bullet shows, fully accessible to our community, used by our administrators, and is available online in our anonymous reporting system. So for the self-assessment scores that I'm presenting tonight, the process has not changed at all. The school safety teams meet, they evaluate their own building based on the performance rubrics supplied by the Department of Ed. The principal and the team gather their evidence, which they have to maintain in the event that there's an inquiry by the Department of Ed, and then ultimately I review the scores, review anything that I may find to be of difference with the building principal, and then our scores are submitted tonight after the Board of Education meeting. So as always in the past, the rubric addresses whether or not in Core Element 1, if we have HIV programs, approaches, or other initiatives. And beneath that, you can see that we have indicators as to how many indicators in each Core Element there are. Core Element 2 refers to training on the policy. Core Element 3 involves staff PD and instruction and training programs, as well for students. And Core Element 4 involves curriculum and instruction. There's areas in which we assess ourselves involving personnel, in areas in which we assess in our incident reporting, in our investigative procedures, and ultimately in our reporting to the Board of Ed, which you know we do at every meeting in executive sessions, and then follow up with notifications to families. Scores can range from none, zero, in which we don't meet the requirement at all, to obviously three, which means we've exceeded the requirement. And the rubric dictates what documentation we need in order to award those points. The maximum score is 78, that any school or district can receive, and the average of the district is averaged through all of the building scores. So Mawa High School self-assessed and concurred that they have a 77 out of 78, and you can see the areas in which they received maximum score in the core elements listed below. Ramapo Ridge Middle School self-rated a 76 out of 78, and again, you can see where we self-rated in maximum scores. Joyce Kilmer, a 78 out of 78. Betsy Ross School, a 74 out of 78. And, you know, some of that is a new administrator also getting to understand the protocol that is used in our district. That is by no means a poor score, I want to be very clear in that, but I think it's also beginning to understand and get a sense of the demands of the rubric throughout the school year. George Washington School, 76 out of 78. Again, you can see the maximum scores achieved. Lenape Meadows, a 75 out of 78. Ultimately, our district average this year is a 76 out of 78 points. In all core elements, every building scored either meets all requirements or exceeds all requirements, and that's pretty much been our history since the inception of the law. Last year, we had a total of 62 investigations district-wide. I know for the board listening to my reports in every executive, it might have seemed like a little bit more than that. And of those 62, 11 were confirmed cases, and the categories in which the confirmations were found were in areas of race, physical appearance, and gender. Here's a chart that represents from 2015, 2016 to '22, '23. And for Mr. Gallo, he had asked about total number of investigations when we were speaking about HIV at a prior meeting. You can see Mawa High School investigated 11 with two confirmed, Ramapo Ridge investigated 22 with only five confirmed, JK investigated 10 with one confirmed, Lenape Meadow, five with one confirmed, Betsy Ross investigated 14 with two confirmed, and George Washington had no investigations this year. As I committed to the board back in 2012, when I took on HIV, I was affirming that we would always be in compliance with what we needed to be relative to all of the cases referred being investigated, and all of the investigations occurring within the timeframes set forth by the law. So we have 10 days in which to investigate after a report is received and come to conclusion. So last year, at my presentation, I set the goal to look at the New Jersey Department of Ed survey, as well as participate in our inclusivity audit relative to HIV, and those areas and commentary from that. And we also set the goal of doing a little more training with our students and parent population as well. And I believe that we've met both of those goals, and I've spoken to Dr. Dittoro about that. So for next year, our goal is going to be in line with our tiered intervention system, and we're going to rely on the school safety team to be a data point for us when we're looking at student support teams, and create recommendations to address system-wide issues and/or student-specific issues. So I think we're finally at an opportunity where our school safety teams are really functioning with wonderful parent participation as a well-oiled machine, and are able to really look at the data that is brought to each table in which we talk about cases, what were confirmed, what were found to not be confirmed, areas of concern, and hone in for each building on areas in need of growth or celebration. And I think we're ready to take that data, which of course is anecdotal, except for the total number of reports and investigations confirmed or not, and turn that into meaningful action through our tiered intervention support system, particularly in the area of student support. Any questions from the board? Yes.
What is Core Element 3?
I would have to go back.
The reason I ask is because five of the schools did not get the highest grades.
Yeah, and again, let's be clear, I don't think that we are really, it's about other staff instruction and training programs, and it had to do with specific to the school safety team members all being given designated time during the school day in which to have training. So we've done overarching training, not enough to say exceeds the criteria, but certainly met the criteria.
What would be a way to exceed?
Well, I would say to you that because those staff members are devoted to other tasks as well, like teaching and case management and all of those other things, that the goal of exceeding would be something I would expect if we found deficiencies in our system, if we were failing to investigate, if we weren't doing fruitful investigations, if they weren't yielding outcomes that Dr. Dittoro agreed to, I would say to you, you need more PD. At this point, because our staff is serving in other capacities, to devote more energy towards something that we're already successful at is, to me, unnecessary at this point. So exceeding would be leaving the district to go to off-site trainings or devoting days to that type of training. I don't perceive our district in need of that.
No, and that was not a purposeful question.
Yeah, understood. Yes.
The new law that three incidents by the same students would require an individual plan, are those three incidents in the same calendar year? Are they across multiple years? Do they roll over?
That's a great question. It's not defined that clearly in the law. I interpret it myself as being within the same calendar year. However, we have a record system in which we can recall back and say, that's a name that we're familiar with, that's an act that we're familiar with. In response to that DOE mandate, not generated by the DOE, but rather by Mr. Pascal, Mr. Corey, and myself, we created an internal system of record-keeping and an internal system of action planning, so that all participants are informed when that occurs, what the outcome is, and what treatment and/or interventions we're going to be using. Any other questions from the board? Dr. Dittoro?
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. Just before our next presentation, I just want to take a moment to thank Ms. Rizzo, the school-based anti-bullying specialists, and the administrative team, because I know we said this before, but it's worth repeating, the amount of time and effort that goes into each and every investigation is significant. This is an important initiative, and I'm very much behind it, but the act of investigating these cases takes a lot of time to engage all of the different people involved, the parents, the teachers, the students, anybody else who has come in contact with the student. So I can't thank Ms. Rizzo and the team enough, so. Correct.
Yeah, the quality of our investigation is really what drives it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. The next report will be one of many this year. We have a number of reports specific to student achievement data. Dr. Ravino and her team back here have our ACCESS scores, our NJGPA scores, our AP and SAT scores that we're all excited to share with the board.
Thank you. Well, with that introduction, you know exactly why I'm here. This is the first of two district testing presentations, but you will also see me presenting on graduation rates as well. So you'll see me a couple times before December. So this is the first one. Ms. Corella is here with us, and Mr. Pascal is here with us. Mrs. Corella is going to talk to you a little bit about the ACCESS scores, which is something that she oversees. And then Mr. Pascal is here to talk about how we're doing in terms of graduation rates right now, how our kids are doing on APs, on AP scores, ACTs, SATs, and all of that good stuff. And I'll be talking about NJGPA. All right, so we're going to start.
Good evening. So I am going to report out on ACCESS. The state has changed the name now for our student population, so I did put parentheses "R.L."s, that's what we were called last year, but going forward, we're going to be called multilingual learners, and the acronym will be ML, just so that as we transition, everyone understands the publication that I am speaking of. So ACCESS itself actually stands for Assessing, Comprehension, and Communication in English State to State. The test itself is broken up into cluster groups. So students in kindergarten take a paper and pencil test, and then students from grades one through 12 will take it online. There are two forms of the ACCESS, ACCESS and then alternate ACCESS, all of the students in Mawa took the ACCESS test this year. This year, we had 66 students who participated in the ACCESS. I'm going to be comparing it to the cohort from last year, which was 58. So the population in general is very transient. There are 36 students in particular that I can compare from 2022 to the test in 2023. So this is just a breakdown of cluster groups. In the past, we have reported out on groups that are greater than 10, but it's important when you understand ACCESS. The ACCESS is really an individualized assessment for each student. So students take the assessment in listening, speaking, writing, and reading, and then they receive an overall composite score. What we're really looking at as teachers within my department is finding the growth for each individual student. So when I'm reporting on this, I'm reporting as a whole, I'm not reporting on the individual growth student to student, which really for us in our instruction is the most important thing. So here are our ACCESS scores. You can see in that orange color, it's the year 2022 results in comparison to 2023. As you can see, in particular, the overall composite score did increase, but I do want to just remind you again that those numbers are different. You're comparing two cohorts, need to lose students along the way, but as you can see, we really do fall the way that the state and really majorly throughout the country are going to present in regards to listening and speaking, are usually in the harder of the areas for our students. Specific, uh, excuse me, listening is greater, speaking is harder. Listening for our students is the first skill that's usually attained. So our students perform well in that, and as you can see, we really did, this year, in our composite score, increase our understanding, and I'm proud to report that actually 83% of our students showed tremendous growth. So from the students who've remained here from 2022 to 2023, 83% of our students showed growth. Four actually exited the program. So what does this tell us and how do we really then shape the instruction for our students? What we started to implement last year, which we are excited about and eager to continue, was an individualized English language plan. And what this information did was break down the scores for all of our teachers, and it gave a background and a history to who our kids are, who they came as students first, how they're developing here, and it's a really important story so that our teachers know the whole story of our children. That is now being uploaded into Real Time, so any teacher can access it, and they are really adapted as we go throughout the year and we gather more information from our students. What these scores also allowed us to do was sit back and say, what do we need to do to provide instructions specifically for our students? So we use the test scores to work with the principals and group our students based upon proficiency. So starting in September, I'm really excited to share that we'll be able to target instructions specifically to individual students' needs based on proficiency level. We also, thanks to Dr. Ravino and the rest of the administration, were able to sign up, train 29 teachers, and that's a really big deal, because what that allows us to do is keep our multilingual learners in their regular setting classrooms and provide our teachers the opportunity to push in to support our students in content-specific classes. The reason why this is so important is because ACCESS actually assesses students not on their speaking skills and having a conversation with Dennis and I were just speaking. They're assessing our students specifically on how they speak to content. So allowing our students to stay in social studies classes, science classes, they're going to have the opportunity to continue to grow and develop their content-specific vocabulary. Instructional supports, we were able to use money from a grant last year to acquire Lexia English, which really is a support system that creates an individualized plan for students. So students go in and take diagnostic, and then based upon how they performed on their diagnostic, the program itself then levels them. This is aligned with the LEA standards, so we have an idea of who's developing, who's emerging, and who's bridging. We also now have iReady, and this past week I had the opportunity to sit with the iReady team, where they shared all of their resources specifically to our multilingual learners, so I'm extremely excited about that, as that also is individualized planning and instruction. And then most recently, we started with sentence frames, and the sentence frames are really great for our teachers and content-specific criteria and how to word questions specifically to language and math. I believe I'm past, Nido.
Thank you very much. All right, so Mrs. Corella will stay up here, just in case there's questions for later. So up on the board, we're going to talk about the NJGPA. There's a few slides that you're going to see that are almost repeats of what you just saw with ACCESS, and that really has to do with what the state requirements are for reporting to the board and to the community. So I'll kind of talk a little bit about that as we go. The NJGPA is an assessment that came out in 2022 to mandate that all 11th graders would take a graduation proficiency test. Last year, they took it, it was considered a field test, though. So those scores technically didn't count, let's say, towards their graduation, but we did report on them to you last year. This year, our 11th graders, our current seniors, took a test last year, which does count towards their graduation. So those are our current 12th graders, they took it in 11th grade, and this test is designed to mimic what you might see on NJSLA. So it aligns to grade 10 standards in ELA, and then in mathematics, it aligns to Algebra I and Geometry standards. So the state requires us to tell you how many students took the test out of how many students could have taken the test. So when you look at the participations, the participation rate, you see 220 out of 222. So we had 220 students in ELA take the test, and we had 219 students in math take the test out of a possible 222. And just as we would say in any testing situation, there are kids that do not take the test for various reasons. If you look at the bottom, it's the district results versus the state results, or in comparison to the state results. So if you look where the blue is, where it's more like Mawa blue, that's our results. So in ELA, we had 91% of our students pass or be considered graduation-ready versus the state at 80.5. In math, we had 84% pass or be considered graduation-ready in comparison to the state at 55%. I'll just leave that there for a few more minutes. The state also requires us to compare year over year. Now, this is a little caveat with this slide. Last year, during the field test, the cutoff was 750. This year, with the test that counts, quote unquote, it is 725. So the state lowered the actual score. So when you look at these scores, although I'm very happy about these scores because they show a great increase, from 65 to 91, and from 76 to 84, we do have to remember that next year, we wouldn't see these large jumps, because you're going to be comparing 722, 725 to 725, as opposed to a 750 to a 725. This is disaggregated data. The state requires us to always report on disaggregated data, and please keep in mind that these are groups of 10 or more. So the N, the amount of students calculated, has to be 10 or more to report. So there are different demographic groups that are not represented here, because our actual number of N was below 10. But if you look, we have female, male, going across the bottom, special education, economically disadvantaged, Hispanic Latino, Asian, and white. Again, scores have gone up tremendously.
Dr. Ravino?
Yes.
Do you have the number of kids that would have reached the 750 benchmark set for last year, so you're comparing apples to apples more?
No, the state only requires us to look at the
I know that.
previous recording of state scores to state scores. That wouldn't be a score that the state gives us. We would have to go in internally, which we can't report publicly to. We have to report on the state scores. Can we hold questions till the end? And Dr. Vivian, we so they can come up to the microphone, otherwise we can't hear Ms. Dittoro. If we could just wait till the end. Thank you. Okay, so this is our math scores. Again, we're looking at last year's score to this year's score in the disaggregated groups, and going across the bottom again, same categories. Here we do see there are two groups that we're going to hone in on in terms of when we talk about interventions, our special education group and our economically disadvantaged group. The state also requires us to talk to you about what we're doing for these students. So we see these reports and we see these scores, but we also want to say, how can we support these students? And it might be 10 students, 20 students, 30 students, or a whole group of, let's say, all females at 143 students. This breaks down for you for ELA, and the next slide will break down for math, what we do for our current seniors that possibly did not pass with graduation readiness for ELA and for math. The top are general supports. You've heard me talk about these classes before, but we have our CCR classes, we have our AHASA classes, and we also provide time for students to take alternative assessments. So just because the student did not pass a graduation test, there are alternative assessments that they can use to graduate and pass, and those are listed there. If you look below, the state also requires us to look at the subgroups and look at what we can do to target those subgroups. So if you see the subgroups that we talked about before were special education and were economically disadvantaged. before were special education and were economically disadvantaged subgroups. These are some ideas that we have in terms of what we do prior to eleventh grade and what we can do after. So not only do we provide all the interventions from the top, but with our special education students, upon entry in freshman year, we actually look and do a portfolio assessment, and we look at all the data that we have on those students. And we include them in certain courses like a CCR English, or we co-enroll them, meaning we give them two doses of English. We give an English nine, ten, or eleven, but we also give a reading course. So those are things that we do preemptively upon entry into freshman year, but then we also provide tutoring and summer support for kids that did not pass the assessment. And the same holds true for mathematics. So the first couple, the first couple bullets are exactly the same. We provide CCR classes, we have our AHASA classes, and then we also offer alternative assessment options for students that do not pass. And at the bottom for our subgroups, we provide co-enrollment, meaning I'm going to give you two classes or a double dose of math. We also provide co-teaching models for our students, which is really, really important. And then we actually added this year a course for twelfth graders in mathematics. And we provide our tutoring and summer help. Okay, so we're going to move on to Mr. Pascal. Mr. Pascal is here to talk about ACTs, SATs, and a little bit about the graduation rate.
Thanks, Dr. Vivino. First of all, I am so proud of our kids. This year, we had one-hundred-and-ninety-eight seniors, and all one-hundred-and-ninety-eight students graduated from Mawa High School who were in the senior class. However, when you look at the graduation rate that we're required to report, it is the four-year graduation rate. And in the graduation rate are included any student who may have started with us and along the way may have dropped out. Okay? So our graduation rate for 2023 right now, as I have it calculated, is ninety-eight-point-zero. Tomorrow, we have to submit all of our final graduates to New Jersey SMART. And then at the end of September or October-ish, the state will then give us their finalized score. Okay? So I anticipate that our graduation rate, including students who may not have finished, meaning they may have dropped out, or they may have been in an out-of-district school and not graduated in four years, they may have graduated in five years or six years, our rate is ninety-eight-point-zero. But for our senior class, all students finished the year and graduated. So very proud of that. SATs, what I'm happy about with this slide, really for SATs, ACTs, and APs, is we have a lot of students who are participating. Okay? We had one-hundred-and-ninety-one students participate in the SAT. It is out of sixteen-hundred, because they make changes along the way. It's two parts. They've no longer do the essay component. You can see what our scores are for 2023. You can see that our scores are moving back up to where they used to be. So I'm very, very happy with that. Last year, we decided to give the PSAT to every sophomore and junior. We gave the PSAT to every sophomore and junior. So in essence, in one day, I tested, I don't know, four-hundred-and-twenty kids plus. Okay? I wanted to do that. We wanted to do that for two reasons. One, I wanted to give every kid the experience of taking the test. Okay? I wanted to give every kid access to taking the test. Okay? It was, they didn't have to pay anything for it. And then on top of that, we offered our kids the opportunity to take a free ACT test so that they can see where they did better on PSAT or ACT. The ACT test is more content-based. And what we were able to do is have kids discern earlier which test was better for them, so that they can just focus on either the SAT or the ACT in terms of their preparation and in terms of their tests taken. Here are ACT results. We have a big increase in ACTs, one-hundred-and-forty-seven participants. The highest score in each category is thirty-six. Students get a composite score. The scores are really good, and I'm happy with the results of that. I'm most, I'm really happy because we had so many kids participate. And I think because we gave them the experience early on at the PSAT and the practice ACT that we have these numbers. Advanced placement, I can't speak highly enough about our teachers as well as our students. We had two-hundred-and-thirteen students enrolled in AP courses last year at Mawa High School. Two-hundred-and-four students took an AP test. We administered tests in twenty-five academic subjects. We offer twenty-four AP courses in my building. The twenty-fifth course was Japanese. We had a student who was a native speaker and studied on his own and wanted to take the Japanese test, which we gave approval to. I think he actually got a five. So really proud. Our scores, ninety-three percent of our kids scored three or higher. So the test goes from zero to five, and if you score three, four, or five, most colleges will take those credits and you can use them, okay, as credits in your program. So for example, my daughter took AP Psychology when she was in high school. When she went to TCNJ, they gave her college credit for that. She was able to take a different elective because she already had those credits. So advanced placement is one way our kids earn credits. The other way our kids earn credits is through our dual enrollment program, where they can earn college credits from six different universities. Okay? And we'll give you more information on that as we, as we move on in the school year. But our overall average for AP scores and tests was three-point-eight. So I'm really proud. I'm really proud of the kids who did that. If we can just give them a minute to look, okay, you can see, you can see the scores here, the average scores in the subject areas. And these are, these are college courses. These are intensive courses given nationwide and internationally. And can you go to the next? And I'm really happy. Our, our, our art scores have consistently been moving in a better direction. So I'm happy about that, too. In terms of students attending college, we sent, we have ninety-four-point-nine students from Mawa High School's class of 2023 going to four- or two-year colleges. We have ten kids who've decided to go to a two-year college, one-hundred-and-seventy kids, that's eighty-six-point-eight percent going to four-year colleges. And to give you some perspective, when I started at Mawa High School in nineteen-ninety as a teacher and we looked at the four-year college, if we had like sixty-four percent of kids going to a four-year college, we tried to get to seventy. Okay? We're at eighty-six-point-eight. So I'm really happy about that. We have six kids who are going to tech and career ed schools. We'll talk, see that on another slide. Our guidance department does a series of open houses where kids are able to see alternative kinds of institutions, tech schools, and all other kinds of opportunities other than a four-year college, so that they're aware of them and can choose from them. And we had, in our category, we have ten kids who are going to employment, one who's going to military, and one student taking a gap year. Our students are going to a hundred different colleges in twenty-six different states. That's great. If you look at the states that are listed and the numbers of where they're going, that has grown and has become more diverse over time, which really shows to, shows to me as the building principle, that when kids are leaving, they feel confident to go other places and that they can be competitive with students at those other schools. And honestly, the first question I ask any student I run into, and in my line of business, when you're doing this a long time, there's not, there are very few places I can go to where I don't run into someone who I've either taught or have been their principal. My question is always, have you been prepared? And I have to tell you, our kids are always prepared academically, across the board, for whatever they're going to after our school. I think the biggest challenge they have really is the social piece of living away from home and living with a roommate, but academically, always ahead of their college roommates. And these are our post-secondary destinations. Within here, I'll just call your attention, I'll call your attention, we have a couple students who are going to the Terry O'Connor Real Estate School. We have students at Lincoln Tech in automotive. We have two students who are at Universal Technical Institute who are studying in the Ford Automotive Diesel Certificate Program. And actually, one of those students who's studying to be a diesel mechanic was a platinum scholar at graduation. She had ninety, ninety or higher in every class she took at Mawa High School, but she wants to be a diesel mechanic. And so that's what she picked. So I am really proud of our students. I'm very proud of our staff, our counselors, our case managers, for all the work they do to move our students to this place. High school is a journey. It's not a perfect journey, but it's a journey and it's an experience. And I'm confident that we're preparing kids for the next level. And based on the results that I see here, I think we had a great year, and I'm really proud of our kids.
Thank you very much. Did the board have any questions for us?
So one comment, I really liked seeing some of the interventions that were up there and specifically that you talked to specific groups. So people who are learning English as a second language or economically disadvantaged, it was nice to see that up there, I think, more than I've seen in some previous presentations. So that's great. In terms of the access exam and looking at eighty-three percent student growth on that exam, is that a typical, I know the access exam is somewhat new, it is hard to go too far back in comparisons, but is that typical, exceptional? If so, what's the reason for it being greater growth than unusual?
It was greater growth than the year prior. I think we were really, from the beginning, and I was very fortunate when I stepped into the role, to have the support to start to kind of come forward with a lot of interventions and ideas from the beginning. So we were able to implement last year the individualized language plan, specifically looking at our students and what they needed. We were able to take Lexia last year and implement it mid-year. So we were able to kind of get ahead of the game in regards to the interventions. And I think really the team itself was excited coming off of COVID to kind of really have the ability to work with our kids in person and have the opportunity to get hands-on with a lot of the information that was starting to be provided us through the different types of curriculum and programs.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I will see you in a couple months to do another one.
Along the lines of my gratitude, I definitely want to express it to Ms. Corella and her team. As she shared, there were a number of things that she brought to our district last year to provide support, not only for our students, but our families, in order to make sure that they feel connected and aligned to our district. I think that's a huge bridge that we were able to, to build so the families feel like they're connected and engaged in the educational process as well. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Pascal and his team. Hopefully, everyone was able to take a look at the scores, whether it was the NJGPA scores or the SAT scores. It's definitely a point of pride that we should hold, being that the number of students that took the PSATs went up by around a hundred students, and our score still maintained and went up. And then our SATs, the number of offerings that we have are tremendous and are growing. And the, and the way that our scores are increases, are increasing with each and every one of those courses is definitely something that Mr. Pascal should, should hold as a point of pride for his team. So thank you very much. And as always, Dr. Vivino, thank you so much for leading the charge in curriculum and instruction. I only have a couple things, and we'll close out my report. I just want to thank the board for attending the board retreat a couple weeks back. I know we spoke about it, but I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for the time well spent. I believe this was our third one together. And during that time, we were able to work on setting goals for, for the year. We were able to also receive training from New Jersey School Board's Alumnus of Board Governance. And we were able to review the equity audit to discuss the findings, which will be, which will be shared during board meeting in the fall. Something that we've been talking about for years, that we were able to schedule this summer, was connecting with the Bergen County Chamber of Commerce. Dr. Fair and I met with them over the summer, Ms. Maureen Huggins, and we were able to talk about what are the different opportunities Mawa Public Schools were able to take advantage of as it pertains to networking events that are coming up in the fall, but also sharing our story in their newsletter and weekly emails. So we're going to be taking advantage of that connection moving forward. And it's something that we feel we'll be able to share our story, but also bring those connections in as it pertains to our Thunderbird Partnership and our internship and externship program, which is an ongoing goal for, for all of us. As you can see in the board agenda, we continue to hire staff. So I know that the board has taken time to this. Thank Dr. Fair. I want to thank Dr. Fair and his team in the Human Resources Department because the amount of work that goes into making sure that we're able to open our doors with everything complete and our staff, our staffing filled, is a challenge. And if you are on any of the emails that I get from superintendents from around the county, everyone's scrambling to make sure that they have positions filled. And we are very grateful for the work that Dr. Fair and his team has done. New school year is upon us. We have our first day on Friday with the staff. As I shared at the board retreat, I would like to repeat again, any board members who are available, eight-thirty on Friday is our first day with our staff at convocation. So please feel free to attend. That is again, eight-thirty on Friday. I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Romero and the facilities. If you, if you were anywhere near the schools this year, this summer, there were, was a tremendous amount of work that was done specific to HVAC at George Washington School, paving across the district, cleaning, the annual cleaning, and just making sure that our schools are fit for our students. And I know that that was a tremendous task, and I just wanted to thank him for taking that time. I was fortunate enough to take advantage and go to the Rainbow Ridge Open House today. And it was exciting to see all the new students and parents, they were able to get their schedule and walk through the, the school. I know that transitioning to middle school, as I had two middle schools, two middle schools, now one high school. It's, it's, it's a point of stress for students to come into a new school and navigate the hallway. So Mr. Corey and his team, guidance counselors, teachers, Ms. Whalen, were, were around the school as well as student ambassadors, that were able to support the students and the parents to navigate their schedule going from homeroom to first period and understanding how the hallways are set up. So I just wanted to say that was a wonderful thing to experience. I know Mr. Pascal had freshman orientation today. The last thing that I'm going to talk about is we've talked at length about getting the Mawa name out and celebrating Mawa outside of just Mawa. So the New Jersey School Boards Association, every single year, has their conference in the fall down Atlantic City. I'm happy to report that we were accepted to present on our Thunderbird Partnership Program. That will be taking place on October 24th. We will be spreading the word. It'll be the first of many, hopefully, but I just wanted to, just to share that this is something that we are starting to get our legs underneath of us along the lines of building the program. We're proud of where we're at, and I know that there's more that we can do. But sharing what the structure is and what the mission is with the state is, is an exciting time for all of us. So we will be doing that on October 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jatoro, and thank you to everyone for all the presentations this evening. It's, we had a lot of information passed to us. And in terms of questions from the public, I just wanted to address that if you have a question from the public, it's just difficult to do it during a presentation. So please save those for public questions and comment, and we can have Dr. Vivino answer that if needed during that time. Okay? Thank you. Otherwise, we generally just take board questions after the presentations. Otherwise, we generally just take board questions after the presentations. All right, just wanted to clarify. Dr. Bleecker? I'm Dr. Bleecker. Just, you know, let's make everyone doctor today. Mr. Bleecker, do you have a report for us this evening? Honorary doctorate. Thanks.
Yes, just a handful of items. Our annual audit, field work portion of the audit was performed last week. We had our auditors in-house all week, as many as five weeks staff in this department here, taking a look at everything from our financials to student IP records, transportation reports, minutes, et cetera. So they finished most of their field work last week. We expect them to come back maybe one or two times in September to close out some open items. And then we'll be meeting later on in the fall to discuss our report. So that occurred last week. Nice to have that behind us now. A couple of the more high-visibility projects that we've had in the, over the summer, of course, Dr. Dettoro mentioned the George Washington HVAC project. Really nice how that project turned out. All the HVAC units have been installed in the classrooms. Additional shelving has been installed for teachers to use in their classrooms on either side of those HVAC units. A handful of electrical work is still going on, but nothing that's going to impact the instruction when we begin next week. All of that work is going to be able to be done after our second shift at the end of the day. So in the very tail end of that project, and really nice to see how it is all coming together. Additionally, at George Washington School, the retaining wall in front of the school had been replaced, was in, some section of it had been fallen to some disrepair, so happy to see that got replaced. And of course, one of the highest visibility projects is our grandstand and track. Replacing the grandstand occurred, started demolition at the end of the fall sports season last year. That is now completed. Some very, very minor cosmetic things still to be done, but very much looking forward to our first regular season football game scheduled for September, September eighth against Tenafly. Looking forward to really showing that off. We had a scrimmage there a few weeks ago, got a lot of great positive feedback from any fans, anybody that was able to make it out for that scrimmage. So glad to see that, that project come to completion. And the last one, again, Dr. Dettoro mentioned his report, but it's also worth mentioning. Every year we pick a couple of areas of our parking lots and walkways to do paving and repair work to. That paving project, we, we addressed three areas in our schools over the summer. One area here at the high school, at Lempin Meadows and George Washington. That was done, as we've said at prior meetings, in conjunction with the township as part of their bid process. First time we ever did that project along with the township and had that relationship with them. Really nice to see how it worked out this year. I think it was a very positive for the district. And just a positive in finding areas to work together and create some efficiencies, both fiscally and operationally. So very nice to see that come to it, or come to completion. Thank you very much. Ms. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. Bleecker. Dr. Fair, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Just to highlight one item, Dr. Dettoro's report is a nice segue. He had made mention of the conscious efforts we made to get the Maua name out there. So you'll see in your places is an article in front of you. It's going to be published in the School Administrative Magazine, which is the national publication for the AASA, which is the American Association of School Administrators. So in this article, Maua's Thunderbird Partnership Program and its growing internship, externship program will be featured in its October issue, where the theme is framed around the topic of connecting with the outside world for learning. So you'll see the title, "Thunderbird Partnerships: From Fledgling to Flight. A New Jersey School District's Program Connects Communities Experts to Classroom Learning and Student Growth in the Workplace." So while the district's programs have been featured in local newspapers and statewide magazines, we are extremely proud of the recognition our growing program will have in this nationwide spotlight. So once the October magazine is published, we will have a copy for you. The copy before you is that which was provided by the magazine's editors as its print-ready copy of the article. So we're really excited and it's, again, great momentum for the district. I also want to wish a Happy New Year to our students, our staff, and our families in Maua. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Fair. Appreciate that. And I guess first off, my report, congratulations to Dr. Dettoro, Dr. Fair, Dr. Vivino, and Ms. Rizzo on, you know, getting Maua out there. And I mean, this is tremendous to get into a magazine with a program and then to also be showcased at school boards. In fact, you know, we talked about this a few years ago, Dr. Dettoro, so I'm glad to see, no, I think, when you were Director of Instruction and Curriculum, we talked about presentations at school boards. So it's, it's just good to see that, you know, obviously the program's doing well, but that we're able to share the wonderful things about this district. So thank you very much. I also wanted to just say that after our last board meeting, a few of the board members, thanks to Mr. Bleecker, had an opportunity to go see the grandstand project, and I'm going to tell you, it's fantastic. You, I don't know if there's ever an opportunity, but there's a special sort of rooftop terrace. But again, that might be for, you know, that's, that's a shush, see? I knew I was going to get a shush from Mr. De Silva. But I am going to tell you, I'm a parent of two kids and going to many football games, and I appreciate that there is now a backing, so I felt very secure climbing up to the top, Mr. Bleecker, of those bleachers. So again, congratulations to you, to your, and to Mr. Romero, I think, your whole team for really, you know, taking the project from, you know, bidding to ending. And, you know, I think people are really going to appreciate all the hard work. So thank you very much. Lastly, enjoy the last few days of summer. We look forward to welcoming the teachers back on Friday and students back on, I guess, Tuesday, Wednesday, okay, next Wednesday. And so enjoy and good luck to everyone as we begin a new school year. All right, board committee reports. Mr. Denise?
Policy Committee, there's one policy on tonight's agenda for first and second reading, and that's because it's time-sensitive and needs to be in place for the start of the school year. That's Policy Twenty-four Nineteen, School Threat Assessment Team. It's a new and mandatory policy requiring school districts to establish threat assessment teams in schools for the 2023 to 2024 school year. The purpose of a team, of a threat assessment team is to provide schoolteachers, administrators, and other staff with assistance in identifying students of concern, assessing those students' risk for engaging in violence or other harmful activities, and delivering intervention strategies to manage the risk of harm where students pose a potential safety risk, prevent targeted violence in school, and ensure safety and secure school environment. There's also one policy and one regulation being abolished. That's Policy Ninety-one zero-zero, Public Relations, is being abolished because the provision of Policy Ninety-one zero-zero are included in a mandated Policy Ninety-one twenty and is therefore redundant. And Regulation Ninety-one forty, Citizens Advisory Committee, is also being abolished because it includes similar information that is in the policy, so is therefore redundant. There are also nine policies or regulations on tonight's agenda for reverse reading only, and that's Policy Regulation Ninety-two-five-twenty, Instructional Supplies. It's been revised to reflect the best current practices that allows the superintendent to designate a staff member the responsibility for the inventory and distribution of school supplies. Policy Fifty-three zero-five, Health Services Personnel. This policy has been revised to outline the roles and responsibilities of the school physician, certified school nurse, certified school non-instructional nurse, and non-certified school nurse, including addressing the requirements for the school physician's license status and required employment contract. Policy and Regulation Five-three-zero-eight, Student Health Records. This policy has been revised to include minor language changes. Policy and Regulations for Fifty-three-ten, Health Services, has been revised to include updates to terminology, reordering the provisions in the Administrative Code and the removal of duplicate language. Policy Sixty-one-twelve, Reimbursement of Federal and Other Grant Expenditures. Regulations Sixty-one-one-five-point-zero-one, Federal Awards Funds, Internal Controls. Policy Six-one-one-five-point-zero-four, Federal Funds. And Policy Sixty-three-eleven, Contracts for Goods or Services. Can all be taken together in concern of federal grants and federal funds received by school districts. The revisions to the policies include renaming the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Act to strengthen career and technical education for the 21st century. It also includes a description of the process used for grant budget development, a training tool and guide development by the district for district employees, a new policy that requires the school district to identify and prevent duplicate of benefits, and a policy requiring vendor suspension and disbarment of checks for the purpose of goods and services funded by a federal grant. Lastly, is Policy Seven-four-four-zero, School District Security. This policy has been revised to provide law enforcement, the authorities with critical incident mapping data for all schools and school grounds and replaces the old requirement of providing blueprints and maps.
Thank you, Mr. Denise. Do we have any other board committee reports this evening?
Mr. Denise on?
Oh, sure. Mr. De Silva?
On Seventeen, oh, you have second reading and adoption of two policies. Is it okay with you? I sent over a recommended gene for Thirty-three-sixty-two. I know it was kind of last minute. Is it okay if we table that one?
Okay.
For consideration?
So we'll table that, and then we'll discuss that thing next. Policy Committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just for Thirty-three-sixty-two?
Just Thirty-three-sixty-two.
Okay. We'll, we'll do that when we go through.
Okay. Thirty-three-sixty-two.
Thank you.
I have a very good question. So we're going through this audit, the Nunavutia Audit, and these policies regarding like federal funding and things. When they audit, are they auditing to these new policies or are they auditing to the policies that were in place at the time, like last year?
They would audit to the policies that were in place at the time that we received the fundings and that the period that the grant award is for. Each federal fund that we receive is for a particular year, for a particular award period, and it would be whenever policies are in place reflective of that period. So with these policies, again, if they are effective now, it wouldn't be effective for the funds we received last year.
And do you foresee any issue with us being on it with these changes?
No, everything is ones that we can adhere to.
Ms. Davenier?
Okay, just a couple community notes. I also attended the sixth grade orientation this morning. Just want to say a very special thank you to the student ambassadors who were there. Building administrators and teachers can be like a little scary and intimidating to the incoming sixth graders, but the students who were there were wonderful. They really took the time to be so polite and so nice and so like warm, basically. So you have a bunch of sixth graders, incoming sixth graders running around the building who have no idea where anything is, and they have these maps, but none of them know how to read the maps. You know, like half of them, you're turning it the other way in their hands because you're like, you're looking at it upside down. And the student ambassadors were just, like, every single one of them was fantastic. Really took the time to say, okay, when you come in, you start up at the gym, like, you don't come in through this door. And like walked these students, like locker to classroom, and they were just so nice. It made the entire experience so nice for all of these kids this morning. So a very special thank you to them for taking time out in their last week of summer break to really be helpful and be on hand this morning. As Dr. Dettoro said, we come back to school on Wednesday. Most of us are very excited. Some of us are holding on to those very last little bits of summer that still exist. A couple of cool events that are happening. On Friday, nine-eight, is our kindergarten party at the playground at Continental. So from three-thirty to four-thirty, all our kindergarten students from all three schools are invited to just come hang out, meet other, you know, friends from your schools, friends from other schools. If you stick around a little bit after that, our rep football and rep cheer pep rally is on Friday at Continental also from five to six. It's just the kickoff of the season. Very excited getting ready for it right now. All the back-to-school needs have now posted. So just a heads up, Maua High School will be on nine-twenty-one, Ramapo Ridge on nine-twenty, JK on nine-twelve, and all three elementary schools will be on nine-fourteen. The Maua Thunderbird Run is coming up this October, Sunday, ten-twenty-two. Early bird registration ends nine-four, so don't forget that in while you can. As Mr. Bleecker mentioned, our features are open and ready at the high school. Girls soccer on nine-seven will be opening up on the field as the first rugby sport to be playing as they take on Dumont. Football will be following shortly after on nine-eight as they take on Tenafly, and then boys soccer on nine-twelve as they take on Pascup Hills. So very excited. September will be a fact month, and we're just looking forward to everybody being back. A big note from the transportation world, a very special thank you to Mrs. Tracy Spindler. Everything is ready to go for the beginning of school. Everybody's bus routes are in their portals. She and her team did a lot of work over the summer. There was a call-out for parents about a Betsy Ross route that was over thirty minutes because of the way that it stayed through town. They were able to find efficiencies in the route, and that route is now under thirty minutes, so it's in line with all the other routes at the schools. So that was a big solid for her and her team. We're very excited about that. They were also able to find just efficiencies in other routes between George Washington, you know, eliminating where there were overlaps, kind of condensing where the stops are, making the routes quicker and more efficient, get kids on and off the bus as fast as you can. JK, we were able to eliminate a route and put those students on two other routes that were already existing without affecting the length of those routes. So again, we just appreciate her tenacity to finding efficiencies within there. And then the high school in the ridge, again, just found places where we could eliminate stops, combine stops, without affecting the customer experience with the students, but also just being a little bit more efficient in route time as they snake through a very large town. Going into the fall, from the Transportation Committee, we're just going to start to create and plan and implement our survey that will go out to all bus riders, whether it is mandated or it is courtesy. As we reported in a meeting at the end of last year, we have very low ridership numbers, even through our courtesy busing. So we're trying to find efficiencies in a program that we spend a lot of money on, so to make sure that we're using it correctly. And hand-in-hand with that, because we will have to then develop an internal procedure based on state mandates on how you can opt in and opt out of courtesy and mandated busing. Want to make sure that we press all our Ts, dot all our Is going through next year. Just want to reiterate, there will be absolutely no changes in this upcoming school year. This is just information gathering. Last year, we were able to do logs, we were able to track who's riding the bus, who's not, physically counting students every day, not every day, but on the days that we were counting, as they got on, as we got off. Thank you to the partnership at all the schools, for the people who were actually there counting and recording those numbers back. Being able to go into this year with true physical data, I'm a big data person, it doesn't lie. So now we know exactly who was on the bus, who wasn't on the bus, taking that information and being able to plan this year, how do we make this a more efficient program? We're really looking forward to it. That's it. Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davenier. And, you know, map reading is actually a skill. I'm wondering, these kids probably need an app or something, right? I mean, honestly.
I don't matter. I was like, that matches up there.
Honestly, who knows how to read an app anymore, right? I mean, there's just, the kids think it just shows up on your GPS.
She asked me for interactive one. She's like, I said, but you aren't here. I'm like, no.
Dr. Fair, maybe we need an app. Ramapo Ridge and the high school. All right, thanks. From Instruction and Curriculum, just, we also had the very comprehensive testing report and all the good results we were informed of. And I just want to highlight Seventeen S on tonight's agenda because that is all the revisions to our curriculum and writing. Again, these are not major changes. There's a few new courses in the business department particularly, but most of them are just minor revisions and things bringing it up to standards. But again, thank you to all our staff and teachers who put in the effort over the summer to upgrade and as we continue to work on our curriculum and make it solid for the upcoming school year. So thank you. That's all we have. Board member remarks, comments? Mr. Gallo is going to the mic. Mr. Hughes?
I have a small request from my neighbors. So I guess while we're still at George Washington doing some renovations, I was told that on the pathway between George Washington and the tennis courts, the pine trees have grown and they're blocking part of the pathway, forcing, I guess, people to go into the street. Is it possible just to trim those back while we're over by GW?
I see Mr. Bleeker writing it down.
Mr. Hughes, we'll take a note and see exactly where those are. We do share some of that property with the township, and we'll see where that lies and how we can best address that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Mr. Gallo, Mr. Coen?
I just wanted to say, you could not have come up with a more perfect title. The title is awesome. Perfect.
Must have been an English major.
Use it for something.
Mr. Gallo?
I just want to, I think tonight was, it was so interesting to begin with the testing report, and it dovetails so wonderfully with us starting a new school year, right? So our achievements in testing last year is just, you know, another milestone in our journey towards excellence. And the commitment and the dedication of our staff and our administrative team to keep and push the ball forward is what makes this happen. What, those scores don't happen in a vacuum. They don't happen by accident. They come about through focused, dedicated work from everybody who works in our district. And so we open up a new school year with new challenges, and hopefully we'll push the ball even further down the field. And I just am very proud to be able to serve on this board and to be part of this organization, and proud of everybody who keeps on, who keeps on keeping on, right? And it's a wonderful, it's a very important achievement. I was just talking to neighbors who moved into town 20, 25 years ago, and everybody was like, well, you know, we moved into Mawa. It was a nice community. But, you know, the schools, there's always like a little shadowing, you know, of their decision-making and moving to Mawa because of schools. And Ramsey was always seen as like this shining beacon on the hill. Today, we outstrip Ramsey by far in terms of rankings and achievement, and we have every reason to be proud of our schools. They are contributing tremendously to the growth of our students, but also to the value of our township and as a place to live. So fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. All right, should we move on to old business? Mr. Bleeker, should we take 16A through E? This is like tough. You better remember which ones you attended now here, this grouping of five.
I need a motion.
Oh, there we go. Do we have a motion? You know, it's the first year back. Even I'm rusty over the summer. Ms. Coen, second by Mr. Gallo.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, but abstain on B.
Thank you. Dr. Park?
Yes, but abstain on whichever ones I wasn't on.
We'll check the records. Ms. Coen?
Yes.
Ms. Avenero?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes, on A and D, abstain on B, C, and E.
Mr. Denise?
Yes, but abstain on E.
And Dr. Morethan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to new business. We have a motion, and so you want to take A through L, L, but table O. Is that correct, Mr. Bleeker?
Just one.
Yeah, we'll make a note.
Just O, O part A, part B?
We'll make a notation of the minutes that for O, Policy P3362, that will be tabled to the next year. Policy P3310 will take action on Tuesday.
Okay, very good. So let's take, I need a motion for 17A through LL tabling 17O, P3362. Mr. Denise, second by Mr. Hughes. All right. Any questions? Mr. Bleeker?
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, but no on Q.
I have an abstention on LL.
Oh, boy.
Don't be laughing, though.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Coen?
Yes.
Ms. Avenero?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
And Dr. Morethan?
Yes. All right, let's move on to 18A through T. I need a motion. Mr. Hughes, second by... Ms. Coen?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, Mr. Bleeker.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, and shout out to all our parent volunteers. They're obviously a critical component of our success, and there's so many names here. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, but I'm going to abstain on Q.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Coen?
Yes.
Ms. Avenero?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
And Dr. Morethan?
Yes. All right, let's move on to public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness. You're asked to limit your questions to no more than one. Your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Ms. Coen. We are officially open to the public.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everybody had a good summer. John Feasen, 20, Falcon Coat, Mawa, New Jersey. I've seen some Facebook postings where there have been rankings published within the state of New Jersey. And congratulations to the district and the board because it seems like, from what I saw, Mawa's in like the top 10% of the state of New Jersey. Is that correct? About 10, top 10%?
Close.
So that's...
We'll take it.
Yeah, I mean, really.
If you say so.
If you say so, Mr. Feasen.
No, I believe I saw that post, but that's a very good achievement, and that should be recognized and celebrated throughout the town. 26,000 people in Mawa should be aware of that because it's a very proudful statement. You know, you live in a town that's one of the top percentage, top school districts in the state, 10%. So I think acknowledgement and recognition and celebration is really in order. Secondly, is there a way for me to obtain the enrollment by school for the last six years? Mr. Gallo, would you have those numbers?
I think Mr. Bleeker might have those numbers.
Mr. Bleeker?
Yeah, Mr....
Mr. Feasen, if you connect with me afterwards, I may ask you to submit an open request, but we have a document that we can provide you with enrollment.
Yeah, because I would be interested in seeing what's been happening. And thirdly, has there been any discussion with the town council regarding the pilot program for the Crossroads property that will impact the budget for the Board of Education?
No, at this time, the township is not connected with us regarding that program.
Okay. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Feasen.
Allison Theodoro, I just have a comment. I hope you don't take it as an offense that I was shouting out, but unfortunately, when we see the agenda online, we're not given the reports that Dr. Dittoro and his administrative team make up. Might it be possible to put that online with the agenda or have a paper copy to pass out? Because it's very hard when you're seeing numbers, and I'm a numbers person, to remember all that information, to ask questions after the fact, or just allow questions on that particular part. And they also asked me of these beautiful boards, but when people sit in the front, it's very hard to see it on blind to begin with. I'm taking pictures on my phone and enlarging them to see the numbers as it is. Maybe we can either raise it up or move the seating around so that the boards can be more visible to everyone at the time?
Along the lines of the presentation, that, we will have the video up for the community to see as well, so they can see it on the video as well. And we're looking at, I'm not sure exactly what, we have presentations up on the curriculum website underneath Dr. Pavino's website. I'm not sure exactly which ones, but I'll check and I can get back to you. But anybody who would like to see it, that's why we put up the video as well in the meantime, so it went through the time.
Nobody, we're presenting it at the board. It kind of like brings itself to questions you didn't know you had because you didn't preview it beforehand.
If by chance you do have any questions, whether it's tonight or after you get a chance to look at it again, please feel free to reach out. We're more than happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Theodoro. Okay, seeing no one else coming forward at this time, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes. So now I need a motion. We will recess to executive session at this time, and then we will adjourn from there. So I need a motion to go to executive session. Ms. Coen, second by Mr. Denise. All right, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.